Planning and zoning meeting for July 7 at 5:30. We will start with roll call. Kate Huesman.
Present.
Fora Shuck.
Present.
John Hastings.
Present.
Jason Walker.
Present.
Mo's Dunkle. I'm just going to mark him down as late for a second. Our planning and zoning chair, Tom Riggs, is absent tonight. And I will try to backfill his position for the meeting, and my name is Slate Camp for the record. Announcements from Commissioner staff. Public comments.
The only thing I would update you on is that I've been working with the consultants on the comprehensive planned, comprehensive plan existing conditions report, which I've posted on the website with some hints per your last review. The website is sandpointidaho.co/Imagine. So I've just updated that. We're updating all of our master plan websites right now as we go into budget season. Beyond that, we are going to be beginning working with the Arts and Culture Master Planning Consultant Group here in the near future. And we're scheduling meetings with various groups much of July. Beyond that, I do not have any anything else.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Then we will move on with. You do?
No, I don't. Thank you, Slate.
You're welcome. We will move on with the meeting minutes approval. Are there any recommendations for correction or revisions required by staff or commissioners? No.
None.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I won't make a motion to approve.
The minutes?
Second. Motion approved. Old business, Erin.
Commissioner, could we get a vote on the minutes, please?
I'm sorry, yes. What was the vote?
Well, we had a. We had a motion and a second. We need a vote.
We need a vote on the motion. Aye.
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 Sorry. Okay, so back to old business.
No old business, Mr. Chair.
We will move on to new business with our first public hearing of the evening. It is a request for variance to construct carports. As I look at the hearing procedures, would you like me to run through it, Erin, or do you?
I can do that if you if you like. I was just going to show the staff report here as soon as I can pull it up. This is a quasi judicial public hearing. As such, we always, as a matter of course, ask if any commissioner has any conflict of interest or ex parte contact. Ex parte contact, of course, is if you've had any contact with the applicant or any affected party outside of these proceedings that to ensure that you're not privy to any information that anyone else here at the hearing is privy to. With your permission, Chair, to ask if commissioners can disclose any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest, if there are any.
Commissioners?
None.
I have none.
No contact.
Excellent.
I actually do know Terry and Brenda from youth sports. It's been a long time since we've attended a game on the field, since kids are 23 now. Just for the record. Okay.
Will it impair your?
It will not. It will not.
The impartial juror? Very good. So as as a quasi judicial hearing, your acted quasi judicial means judge-like. You know, for those who are not familiar with these types of proceedings. With that, I will give a brief overview, if I may, and then invite the applicant up to give their presentation or fill in any gaps that I have missed.
I did miss something here.
Yes.
I did not ask for, if anybody from the public was going to make a statement for the little document.
The little document.
You know, the in favor, neutral, opposed, to speak in front.
Oh, that is when you open the public hearing. At this point, we're just giving a basic presentation. So the the procedures are such that I'll give a basic overview of the application. Then the applicant will come up and present. Then you open the public hearing, and that's when you go through this steps, those in favor, those neutral, those opposed. And then you will. Once the hearing is closed, no more new information. So you you're unable to get, you may not ask the applicant to come up or anyone from the audience to come up and speak without going through the whole process again. You may ask questions at staff, once the hearing is closed. And we always recommend that during the applicant's, when the applicant is invited up to speak or during their rebuttal, I did forget the rebuttal part. If there if there's any testimony against, the applicant may come up and rebut after the opposed. So but after that, once the public hearing is closed, no more testimony, new information. It's always good practice to, before you close a public hearing, to ask the applicant if they're amenable to any. In the case of conditional use permits, more typically, if they're amenable to the conditions suggested or provided or that commissioners propose. In case of variances, you, as a staff report, in case of variances, as the staff report mentions, there are specific findings that you have to make. And we did provide some draft language in the in the motion for you to make those findings. And we included a lot of detail in the staff report. That I can kind of go over a little bit more detail about what is proposed. There are no questions at this point about the proceedings.
No questions.
Okay, very good. This is a variance request from Terrell and Brenda Cooper for to construct two carports. The variance is needed because our setbacks in the residential single family zone, which this site is located, and I'll bring up the site here, requires a 20-foot setback. And we do have a design standards that garages and carports do not take up more than 50% of the facade of the house. So it's those two standards that they are really asking for a variance from. Sand Creek, this is on Sand Creek Lane. It is a private street. And the reasons stated is is because of steep slopes, which I have indicated here through a contour map, as well as their septic revised septic system, which requires a reserved area, which effectively prevents any other area on the site to propose, to construct the carports that they are proposing. I provided variance criteria in Idaho Code, Sandpoint City Code, as well as definition of undue unnecessary hardship, which I know can be a little bit confusing. So according to the definition provided in the staff report from Duane's Encyclopedia of Law and and Fonda, if you're still with us, please feel free to jump in. Fonda is our city attorney for land use matters. And we're always fortunate to have her with us during these proceedings. So under that definition, special or specified circumstance that are partially or fully exempt from a person from performing a legal obligation so as to provide an unreasonable or disproportionate burden or obstacle. Next, in the staff report, we show the findings that are required in Sandpoint City Code and then our public hearing procedure. With that, I would, oh, I guess one other thing. I apologize for the amended staff report for both this and the other public hearing that we have this evening. We were late in getting to you the comments from Independent Highway District. I hope you've all had a chance to read them. It is the first comment under the public written comments section of the attachments in the staff report. And with that, I would answer any questions, if there are any.
Erin, I'm having trouble envisioning where this is. Can you put it up on the screen there showing like where the University of Idaho property or the airport is? Is this north of there?
Yes, and if you can see down the thumbnail image, this is kind of the area that's shown up here. So it's east of the airport and just north of the former University of Idaho property. Mountain View Drive here is the former University of Idaho property is just south of that. So essentially, on your way to Popsicle Bridge, your left would be Sand Creek Lane, private road.
And what is that big field to the west of it?
That is a privately parcel.
Okay.
Bacon.
All right, thank you.
Erin, I have a question.
Yes.
The element of the variance request that relates to the percentage of the frontage that the structures occupy, looking at the illustrations here, it looks like the combined width footprint of these two parking structures would be 48 feet out of 100 feet of front property line. So doesn't that equal less than 50%?
So the standard is 50% of the facade, not of the lot.
Oh, of the house itself?
Right.
Okay. So it's it's pretty much 100% of the facade that is being covered.
Not quite, but.
Okay.
It's more than half.
There's the duplexes are connected in the center, so, okay. Scrolling through.
I can bring up a applicant has provided some photos, and I can kind of, here, this is a pretty good shot of the front of the house. And you can get a pretty good indication of where the carports are proposed based on where the cars are parked.
Are we going to hear from the applicants as well?
Yes, unless you have any other questions. Mr. Chair, I would, I think you may want to note that Mr. Dunkle is able to join us. Thank you for the note, Commissioner Dunkle. And Fonda, correct me if I'm mistaken, but given that Mr. Dunkle kind of came in late to this particular item, is would it be appropriate for him to recuse himself from this decision? Or are we at the point, because we have not yet opened a public hearing, that he may actually participate in a vote going forward?
Mr. Dunkle, have you had an opportunity to thoroughly review the packet?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and so do you have any questions based on what you reviewed in the packet for staff at this time for Mr. Claus?
No, I don't.
Okay, I think he can proceed. He will not need to recuse himself.
Excellent, thank you.
So we'll let the record show 5:45 arrival for Mo's Dunkle, please.
One additional question about the proposed variance is the, are these carports 24 feet wide? Is that is that for two cars or are those one car each?
That would be sufficient for two cars each.
So these are the equivalent of a two-car garage in width? Okay.
Sorry, I hope I'm not making anybody dizzy. I'm just trying to get back to the.
Can we take one? Can we take one opportunity while we're waiting just to confirm with Commissioner Dunkle that he does not have a conflict of interest or have had any ex parte communication regarding this project?
Thank you, Fonda.
You can thank Commissioner Huesman.
Thanks, Kate. No ex parte communication at all.
Or conflicts of interest?
No conflict of interest.
Thank you.
So if we've completed explanation by staff, we can move to presentation by applicant?
Yes.
So I'll just review quickly. Commissioner, commission members should address their questions to the applicant at this time.
Do you have anything further to add, or would you like to provide a statement?
I can provide a statement.
Excellent.
Hello, I'm Terrell Cooper. Thank you for taking the time to review this variance process. Our 1970 A-frame duplex sits on a one-acre lot on a private road, Sand Creek Lane. The lot is 100 by 400 feet. And at about 200 feet, the property drops off steep to Sand Creek and is not suitable for building. The property was annexed into the city of Sandpoint at some point. Public sewer was never brought down, Sand Creek Lane, so we are on a septic system. Our septic field failed in 2017, and we were required to build a 1,500-square-foot drain field. And to my understanding, we're required to reserve an additional 1,500 square foot space 200 feet from the creek for future drain field in case the current system ever fails. This effectively removes any opportunity for construction of carports or garages on a flat usable area on the back of our property. Other Sandpoint City residents are on a public sewer and would not have to preserve 3,000 square feet of their property for a drain field. Since we're on a private road and we pay to maintain it, and we, because our septic system covers the only usable building space in the backyard, and you're not supposed to drive on it, we're in a unique circumstance inside the city limits. And that's why we're requesting to build the two carports in the front of the property instead of somewhere else.
So I have a question. The Independent Highway District expressed some concern about snow placement. I'm just wondering, are the current parking spots where you plan to build the structures, are they currently used for snow storage in the winter? Do you foresee?
It is on the side of the property. If you look to the side of the south part of the property here, and then also on Botter's property across the road, we've used that in the past. What these carports will do is actually eliminate a lot of the snow removal that we've had to do to be able to park there.
Right.
So it's going to eliminate probably half of the snow removal. The interior place between the two carports will also be used for snow storage space, so and extra parking, too, so there wouldn't be parking on the road.
Right. Are these, so I assume as a carport, these will have no walls. They'll just be posts with a roof, basically there. It's not enclosed at all? Okay.
If it's a private road, is there, is it like a homeowners association that contracts with the Independent Highway District then? We do not contract with the Independent Highway District. We maintain our own road. And we do have HOA and a homeowners association.
So all snow removal is the homeowner's responsibilities on that?
On that road and for each parcel.
Does anybody remote have any questions?
I don't. Thank you, Slate. I, the request makes sense to me.
Terry.
Forrest.
Hey, Terry.
Yes.
This is Forrest. Is there a chance to connect with the city sewer? Is that impractical or an undue hardship? And is there any timeframe for such where you guys are?
The city has crossed that path many years ago when somebody tried to build or subdivide their land. And they were adamant at that time, they were not going to bring sewer down that road.
Okay.
They would have to condemn the, build a six-foot-wide road with a cul-de-sac at the end. And so I, for whatever reason, they decided not to do that.
It sounds like an undue hardship. Thank you.
Commissioners, present. Any more questions?
Was there ever a thought of moving the proposed carports closer to the structures to move them further away from the street?
You could do that. That would effectively block all the light from the front of the houses there. That's five feet is what we have. We went that close. I suppose you could go a little closer, but that would eliminate a lot of the natural light coming into that.
It would still require a variance.
Yeah, that's still within the 20 feet, unless you made them smaller. Question for staff is if somebody was to put up, I guess this is kind of outside of this, but if somebody put up like a temporary car structure, how is that different from this?
It would be considered a structure in building code. So it's not something that we have typically interpreted as enforceable in terms of our setbacks and design standards.
So somebody, we could put up something as close to the road as.
Temporary tent.
Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Any more questions from commissioners?
Nope.
I have none. Thank you, Slate.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the opening of the public hearing in which the public may provide testimony. Does that look like there's any testimony?
Typically, you would call, yeah, just just for for to adhere to our typical procedures, you ask for those who support. We did get some included in the packet, and I forgot to mention this, apologies. We did get four or five letters of, we did get letters of support of project. We didn't receive any neutral or any opposed. And so typically, you ask for who would support and who is neutral, and then who was opposed. And then the applicant may rebut.
So who would support, who's neutral, and who would oppose?
Yes, in that order.
Okay. Is that good enough?
If there's none for any of them, I suppose it's okay.
Well, if there is none, is there any in favor, neutral, or opposed parties? Then no. So we move to rebuttal testimony from applicant?
They may choose to waive.
Does applicant choose to waive?
Nothing to rebut.
And at this time, we will close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
I'm sitting here, and I missed the last part of your, I would like to say that us being the neighbors, Z Bell, think that we are for the project.
So an in favor. Thank you, sir.
And your name again, please, sir?
Z Bell, Z-I-D-E-Bell.
And did we have written comments from you as well?
Yes. I think there are some in there.
No, I was wondering if this gentleman submitted a written comment. So this is a new comment.
Okay, so can we move to deliberate, commission deliberate?
Yes, as long as you're friendly to for sure closing the public hearing at this point.
Ask the public if there's anybody else.
Does anybody else else have anything to say? Then we will move to deliberate.
I would say it sounds like a reasonable request. The neighbors are in favor. Obviously, the argument that having a roof over the cars actually reduces the need for snow removal. And it sounds like even in the current situation, snow removal or snow placement is not an obstacle to the placement of these structures. So that's my thoughts. And the the undue hardship of not being able to build on the flat usable land in their backyard seems like a reasonable reason to grant the variance.
Would you like?
In my view, if if there was a chance that there was going to be a more dense neighborhood in the near future to where this may become a problem, then I would probably be opposed to this. But since the lot sizes are probably pretty set in stone for at least as long as we could see, or as far as I could see, I don't see there being an obstruction to traffic view or or I don't see there being a problem with this. So I'm I'm in favor of a carport being in front of the house, too, instead of doing more disturbance to get it around the back anyway. So I'm in favor of it.
Would somebody like to make a motion for approval?
Got to find a language. Let's see.
I move the Sandpoint Planning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Terrell, Terrell, and Brenda Cooper for a variance from Sandpoint City Code 9413B2 and 9413E3A1 to construct two carports due to the presence of steep slopes and the development limitations imposed through the requirement of a reserved septic drain field on one parcel totaling 1.02 acres, which is legally described as Lot 4, Block 1 of Mountain View Ranchettes, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Book 3 of Platts, Page 2, Records of Bonner County, Idaho. My reasons for this decision are that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land. Structures or buildings in the same district. And the requested variance is not in conflict with the public interest. If it were, I think we would have had some people write or testify that they were opposed to this.
Thank you, Jason. I second.
If I may clarify, in, I think I heard, but just to confirm, you're, all four conditions as outlined in code is reflected in the staff report, all six reasons.
Yes, all.
Four plus the.
I chose two, but yes, I agree with all the reasons that the staff presented for approving this variance, which are in writing.
Thank you.
Do I need to read them?
No.
Okay.
Kate seconded. We'll take a vote. Away.
Aye.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Mr. Chair, if we could have a roll call, though, just for clarity for the clerk.
Okay.
Commissioner Shuck?
Aye.
Commissioner Huesman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hastings?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
The motion passed?
Excuse me?
Please, the motion passed.
Yes, the motion is passed. Do I have to hit the gavel? Motion is passed. Just making my notes there.
Congratulations.
Ready to move along to?
Ready.
Item 6C, request for conditional use permit for non-ancillary outdoor vending. Item 6C, request for conditional use permit for non-ancillary outdoor vending, PCUP 20-0003.
Here we go. Do you like a brief overview of the application?
I would. Explanation is subject of the hearing by city staff.
And before I do that, again, can we disclose any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest at this time?
I have none.
None, none for me.
Boris, none for you?
None for me.
Thank you. And again, I apologize for the late submittal of the, for the late submittal of the comments from IHD, Independent Highway District. Did all of you have a chance to review those comments? Parking, which is addressed in the staff report.
I did not, Aaron. Can you just summarize those briefly for me, please?
Yes. In fact, I'll just go right to them, just to make sure you've had a chance to see them in their entirety. They're very brief. Sorry for the delay. Here we go. Comments are the only concern would be, is there parking and safe turn-in-turn-out of the site in question? That I will go over what the site in question is and where it is, which is located at the corner of Alder and Fifth Avenue. The site close to Cedar Street Station, the same central parcel where Misty Mountain Furniture, Hair Swans, and various other businesses are located. This is a proposal for a non-ancillary outdoor vending use, including up to two food trucks. We did receive a trip generation and distribution letter, which did not indicate that a traffic study was warranted in this case. The site plan indicates where the seasonal vending would be, according to the applicant's narrative. Staff estimates that approximately 17 parking spaces would remain. I did count the snow storage area denoted on the site plan, as this is a seasonal use. The ingress egress is 26 feet wide, wide enough, meeting our minimum driveway standards. It is along the bike and pedestrian path, the community trail connecting to Dover. And let's see. No utilities. City utilities are proposed for use. They would need to be self-contained if, not that we heard in the narrative, but if they are, that would require additional permitting and fees, et cetera. Same with any electrical. I didn't address that specifically, but any electrical, of course, would require an electrical permit. Permanent extension cord is not allowed through electrical code. With that, I do not really have any, anything to add beyond what is in the existing staff report. We did have a few comments in support, one neutral, two, and one opposed. With that, I would answer any questions you have at this time.
Aaron, I didn't quite understand the language. Seasonal outdoor vending, including up to two food trucks. Does that mean there could be two food trucks and a dozen other vendors out there? Or will that be clarified by the applicant's presentation?
I will let the applicant speak to that directly, but in the, the application is for up to two vendor areas and up to two food trucks. And that's, and the reason up to two food trucks is specified here in the staff report because that is what the trip generation letter provided for, that those food trucks are probably the most, have the potential to have the more traffic impact than, essentially as a fast food without a drive-through. That's how they were calculated. So that's why that limitation specifically is in there. So beyond that, it's just the.
One of the comments, the one that was concerned about traffic, well, they were concerned about traffic. You are saying this is a small enough change that an official traffic report is not required? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, the only thing a trip generation and distribution letter indicates is that it does not rise to the level of doing a full traffic impact analysis or study, which would, which is what code would require to acquire, essentially any off-site improvements to mitigate those traffic impacts. I have in the staff report indicated the width of Valder Street, which is 40 feet curb-to-curb, providing enough space for parallel parking on either side, notwithstanding the, you know, existing driveways on either side of that street, as well as proximity to the intersection. But beyond that, I really don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions before we move to presentation by applicant?
No further.
I have one. Is this similar to the Fourth, Fourth Street, Fourth by a farm and park, across from Farm and Park?
Is it equivalent?
Is it?
In number of vendor spaces, no. The, that CUP at the food truck court on Oak Street across from Farmers Market, that went through a CUP long ago. At that time, a trip generation distribution letter was not required by the city. If that's kind of getting to the nature of your question. But that one does have significantly more vendor areas. There's a limitation. I can't remember the exact number, but it's more than two.
Okay.
If we, staff did provide a sort of menu of conditions, which I hope you've all had a chance to review. And it's always appropriate to ask the applicant if they're amenable to the suggested conditions. It's on page eight, A through E, or A through D, and then any other conditions that the commissioners may wish to entertain based on additional feedback.
Would we discuss that right now, or?
I'll answer any questions about it. But I would just suggest, in the case of conditional use permit public hearings, that you, at least at some point before you close the public hearing, is to ask the applicant if they were amenable to the conditions.
Okay.
Any other questions for me at this point?
No. So we'll go or move to presentation by applicant, please.
Hello. I'm Chris Park. I'm the co-owner of the property in question. And I'd like to start to say that, well, we did our development there in 1996. And part of our original vision for the property was to have this northeast corner used as a outdoor vending spot. It's in our original plan that Bruce Millard drew up for us. And now we finally like to follow through with that vision. In the past, we've used that corner. You may have, if you've ever driven by, we would have chainsaw carvers and more, and furniture vendors out there that tied into the Misty Mountain Furniture Store in this exact same spot, which did draw a nice amount of attention and did not cause any undue traffic issues at that time. With the food vending, we'd like to limit it, you know, to the nicer months, April 1st through the end of October, and, because that is our snow storage area in that corner. We may also like to have, you know, garden supplies, fruit or vegetable vendors, we've talked about, or somebody selling flowers or something like that. Something that might complement a food vendor. The space is 36 by 26. And we'd very much like to encourage pedestrians and bicyclists to stop in there. We are on the path there. And we would open up our fence there to provide easy access for bikes. And I also expect people in the building would like to visit the food truck for their lunches. It's a very nice way for us to draw more people into our building for where we have multiple businesses. We have noticed with Fifth Avenue, it's such a big street that it can be difficult to get people to come to that side of Fifth Avenue from the main downtown core. So we, this is another example of trying to pull people to the west side of Fifth Avenue. It's very important to us that the look of what we put out there matches with kind of our rustic theme of the building. So we'd like to provide some, Misty Mountain will provide cedar picnic tables, few other accoutrements out there. And the reading through some of the conditions that for the, the, what do you call it, the plan, the city plan, it seems like we fall in quite nicely with a lot of those items as far as promoting bike use, creating a more vibrant downtown, giving more business opportunities to locals. We do have a public restroom there. We also have a dumpster. And as far as parking goes, it doesn't affect the parking in the parking lot itself, whether we have that space there or not. We still have the same amount of parking spaces. Our parking flow, the parking lot flow is good. We also have a way to get in and out of the parking lot going to the south through the alley. So you can pull in on Alder Street and you can leave on Cedar Street through the back alley. It's one-way, although people do come in both ways, but it's primarily one-way. Historically, we really haven't had too much congestion in our parking lots. I did notice with the chip, trip generation distribution letter that their numbers there were the worst-case scenario. They like to point out that estimating vehicle trips based on fast food restaurant is likely an overestimate for the actual proposed use. Food trucks typically have a lower number of daily customers, as well as a larger share of pedestrian trips than traditional fast food restaurants. And that's definitely what we're shooting for, is more pedestrians and bicyclists. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Park?
I have a question. Is this, from looking at the pictures, this is just the corner that's kind of encased in the logs. This isn't the whole gravel area.
Exactly. Yes.
And so you're probably looking at two vendors, regardless of what they are, because that's a pretty small space.
Absolutely. Yeah, we really don't want it to be too, we understand that there's limits at the parking lot and the traffic flow. So we intentionally limited it to that small amount. I mean, there's a very good likelihood, we're just going to have one and see how that goes. And if that does well, then we'll go from there.
Where do you envision placing picnic tables, trash cans, things like that? Are they within that log area that you've shown in the photos here? Or are you going to place, let's say you had two vendors. From this, from the illustration, it looks like there's just room for two food trucks, let's say.
I suppose it depends on the size of the food truck. But we would intentionally keep it all within that area, because we definitely want to maintain the rest of our space for customer parking.
And were these logs here just placed for the photo to show us? Or are those always there?
From a few years ago, when we had that site set aside for chainsaw carving, furniture sales. That's where. Did you ever see that when you're driving through town? It's been a few years since we had it set up.
Yeah. And this, the fence shown in these photographs, is that currently there? Or has that been removed since?
It is currently there.
Okay, but you don't plan to put another fence around the enclosed area?
Not at this time, primarily because it's an important zone for our snow storage. That corner is where we pile our snow. And so we really don't want anything permanent there. It would all be gone. After October 31st, everything would return to the way it is.
What is your plan for the vendors accessing electricity in this corner of the park?
We would like to go through the permitting process to bring in electric. And all the food trucks would be self-contained, so there's no water. They haul out all their own trash. But as far as that goes, we won't provide that.
Questions remotely?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Park, I noticed that you indicated if there were two food trucks, you would, there would be a six-foot aisle between them. And in normal times, that would be fine, I would think. Unfortunately, these times are not normal, I hope. And you may have answered this question already in saying that you were going to start with just one food truck. But to the extent that this pandemic persists, do you anticipate having two vendors there? Would you give more space between them so that people could stay further apart? Or have you not thought that far ahead yet?
Well, no, that's a good question. And we certainly could make it a little wider without negatively affecting our parking in the lot. We kind of, we went out there with 100-foot tape and kind of marked it off, but there's definitely room between the main access to the parking lot and between that and the food vending corner to expand horizontally, if you will. That makes sense. We can add room.
So you could do that if you needed to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
You plan to include bike racks, places for people accessing from the bike trail, place to park their bikes?
Yeah, we, you know, I didn't put that in my proposal, but I should have. It's very straightforward to add some bikes. They certainly could be leaned up against the existing fence, but I think, I think we would like to add some, some bike racks. We've already talked about that with the, with the primary vendor we have in mind.
Just checking, Jason, see if you're going. Does a primary vendor, is it an actual food truck or food trailer?
It is a food bus.
Okay.
Is it hard bulls?
It's Jupiter Jane. And she was formerly parked, you may have seen her parked, in the Granery Building District.
Yes.
That's who we would like to work with.
So this space is. So this space is large enough for that bus? Really?
Yeah.
That bus was there, a huge part of this framework.
Yeah, I know. I've seen it in your parking lot. I missed it.
Well, the nice thing is, like I pointed out before, is it really doesn't negatively affect our existing parking.
Yeah.
And we can expand if we do need more. I think our, our goal is to try it with, with Jupiter Jane and see how it goes.
Okay.
With, with one.
So basically formalize what you're doing casually now, but provide a little bit more infrastructure, seating, bike parking, things like that.
We want to make sure that Jupiter Jane can succeed, you know, before we'd ever consider bringing in someone.
Yeah.
If it was two food trucks. If there's a special event in the future, maybe that would be sometime we could bring somebody in for the event.
Would Jupiter Jane still be a traveling food truck? Or would it become more permanently located there for the?
My understanding is that she'd like to stay there.
I do have events already on my calendar, so I will pull out from time to time. But my goal is to be stationed.
Question, is this application only to access through, in between the two possible trailers? So does that mean that if there's one, that it would be parked on the, the west side of the proposed location?
I suppose that it could go either way. I mean, it might be nice to put the truck on the street side to maybe block noise if you had your tables on the western side. I, probably whatever the Jupiter Jane, whatever she thought best at this time.
I have a little concern about, the vehicle could be pretty close to the bike path. I feel like the, the space is small. I feel like one is going to fit nicely, but two would. I think, I think the space between the six feet makes it a little bit congested. But then my bigger concern is that the one, if there was two there, that one of them is going to be pretty close to the sidewalk and the bike path on, on each side. And that would encourage people to congregate on the bike path and maybe obstruct the flow. And then also I think that does make a limited area for garbage. And maybe if you're going to maintain everything in that location, obviously there is room outside of the location for other stuff, which I feel like there's plenty of space to expect, to make this a little bit bigger. I'm not sure if staff could elaborate on, like, is this the, is there, is there a reason for this size? Is that just what the request is? Or is it this, this size for a certain reason?
Yeah, I think, I may, he was shared, the vendor area is really, you know, what's proposed. And staff could certainly work with the applicant going forward, you know, to at least inform them of any ADA issues that may, may arise or et cetera. And it, and also in one of the, I believe, one of the suggested or one of the potential conditions that we included in staff report was that adequate trash receptacles at the vendor area shall be made visible to public and emptied at the close of each business day. So in terms of trash, that does kind of mitigate that issue. And there is a fence, I believe, between the vendor area and the path.
Correct.
Is there, another question of staff, is there like a setback requirement on this?
No, there's not any structure. Well, even if it was in the commercial A-zone, it's essentially the downtown zone. And city, the city does not have any. In fact, we, our code requires that buildings are built to the street or fairly close to the street to continue that traditional downtown development pattern.
Okay, also, this kind, does this get around the, the parking requirements for like certain square footage?
So a good question. This parcel is active, actually within the exempted parking area. So our code does not require any, any parking at all. Of course, you know, that's, that's true of any downtown, if you, you know, any of the, the same standard applies First Avenue where, you know, buildings are built, you know, full out to the street. And though a lot of developers and buildings elect to have parking in that area, it is not specifically required in code. Now, should they decide to redo the parking lot, we do have dimensional standards that come into play and ADA standards. But as an existing, you know, gravel parking area, none of those standards are triggered.
Thanks.
Questions from Commissioner Remote, Commissioners Remote, anymore?
No further questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioners present, any more questions?
None for me.
No.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Those wishing to testify are required to fill out a sign-up sheet, which will be provided by the city. The order for those providing testimony should be as follows. In favor, neutral, and opposed.
I have to look at it, look it up there. Anyone would like to testify in favor?
I have to fill that out before I say anything?
You can fill out afterwards if you like.
Okay.
Yeah, so you state your name and whether you live in the city for the record.
Okay.
Yes, you may.
Okay. My name is Katie Adams, and I live on Woodby Road here in Sandpoint. Born and raised, I now myself own a food truck, Hartbow's Food Truck. And I'm in support of this, even though I have no affiliation and no pub, no future plans to park my food truck on their spot. I find it very difficult as a business owner to grow in a way that's sustainable for me without taking out a loan. And so I think that the food truck path is a really great one, following kind of like what Joel's has done. So I'm on a personal journey to expand what I'm doing here in Sandpoint and have an impact and grow and have a cafe one day. And I can see that other businesses and what they're trying to do supports this effort. So I am in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Any other, in favors that like to testify or make testimony? Neutrals? Opposed? No rebuttal?
If, if they choose.
Would you like to waive rebuttal? Sorry, it's my first time. Final questions may be asked of the applicant at this time. If any new facts were elicited, however, the public must be given an opportunity to comment on new facts. If there are none, then.
I have a couple of things I might bring up. One is the question we were asked before about amenable to some of the conditions that have been listed there. Is that something you've seen all those and those make sense to you?
John, you want to answer?
Yeah, we are amenable. I'm John Edwards. I'm the other property owner.
Got you. And then my other question, getting around to Kate's concern, would be, and I don't know if we would need to do that here and now, if that would be another time, but if we were to increase that dimension by a couple of feet, so if we needed more spacing, would that be an appropriate action for us to take? And is that also something you would be amenable to? Or does that conflict with the other uses of that property?
No, sir. No, we could expand.
Just so that you wouldn't have to come back to us if you needed to.
We would like that, actually, yeah.
That's not allowable.
I, I don't know if we can allow an expansion of what was proposed and advertised. Well, we didn't, I guess we didn't specifically advertise the, well, we, we provided links to the application in our notices. Fonda, can you advise us on whether or not it is even possible to allow a further expansion of the vendor area? Correct? Is that my understanding?
My, I guess would be as a conditional use, one of the other things we might add to it, can we add to it an expansion of a couple of feet for the purpose of social distancing? Or is that not allowable at this juncture?
It's not allow, go ahead, Aaron.
No, please, Fonda.
It's not allowable if it's an expansion of what was, I'm, I'm looking at the application now. Wasn't it, if it is an expansion of what was asked for, so.
Okay, that's all I need to know, so.
Okay.
One of the conditions does have a review five years out. Of course, they can always apply for an amended, you know, if things grow and they want to expand, they can always apply to amend the CUP at any time later if they so choose.
Can we make that one of our conditions?
Well, we did put in a five-year review in there. And that's kind of based on internal staff discussions. Which is, you know, it doesn't trigger necessarily a full public hearing. Is that your understanding, Fonda?
Yes, that's correct.
So it would just be a review in five years. If, at that point, you know, should there have been insurmountable problems from this action, you can revisit it at that time.
This says during the five-year period, it can be brought up.
If any of the, if the conditions are not adhered to, certainly it's true with any conditional use permit, it could be revoked. That has happened once, my understanding, in Sandpoint's history.
Aaron, I have a question.
I mean, we, and, and just from a staff perspective, we would certainly reach, you know, if there were any, anything we became aware of, the conditions were not met, we would certainly reach out and work with the applicants and let them know and try to rectify the situation before we bring it back to you.
Aaron, you mentioned that this, this parcel is within the zoning area where no parking is actually required onsite.
Just within, correct.
So in theory, I mean, this whole parking area, it's kind of a mute point whether they, the applicant says that they're not actually losing any parking spots at present, but who cares? It doesn't matter. They could lose all the parking spots and it wouldn't be in violation of any code. Is that correct?
That's true.
So, so my, my, what I'm leading to is in the future, like, they could come back and turn their whole parking lot into a food court or build, build a restaurant in the parking lot. What kind of permit would that require just to turn this into a, a permanent structure?
So a restaurant, an actual built restaurant to code, you know, without any need for a variance or anything, would essentially just require a site plan review, likely a, potentially a trip generation letter. But that would be administered by staff and then followed by a building permit. And, you know, may trigger some additional infrastructure improvements and water sewer hookup fees and that kind of thing. So conditional use permits are only triggered for those uses that are in zoning code require a conditional use permit. Or, you know, if they want to do something outside of code, that would require a variance or something that, you know, is specifically not allowed. They'd have to, like, approve hardship.
It is, it's, the reason I ask about parking is some of the letters we received in opposition to this permit expressed concern about parking. It seems like that's, shouldn't be, I mean, no, if they're not required to have any parking, yet we're concerned about the impact on parking. Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is like, how can we take those concerns too seriously when they're not actually required to have any parking onsite?
So you do have authority to require stricter standards through a conditional use permit on a case-by-case basis with appropriate findings of fact. As denoted in the staff report, they still are maintaining approximately 17 spaces by our calculation. And again, that is only seasonal. You know, that corner wouldn't, you know, maybe a couple of parking spaces. But again, there's also on-street parking available, as we denoted as well, so. But certainly if you can make appropriate findings, you arguably could. We have not put that in as a potential condition just based on our analysis of the site and existing city code, which does not require it for specific reasons in that area. One of which is to allow for additional vibrancy, walkability, and bikeability.
Could we require expansion for bike parking, trash, just accessibility?
So there is a condition in there for the trash receptacles shall be provided. I did analyze bike parking, again, additional for that. Parking, bike racks are not necessarily triggered by code. And I did take a look and analyze the fence, which actually would meet standards for our bicycle parking standards. We do have standards for, you know, required bicycle parking, two points of contact, 60 inches, you know, length-wise, et cetera. And that fence would meet those standards for, I didn't calculate how many spaces because it's not triggered by code. But certainly if you want to acquire by, you know, addition, above and beyond that, certainly I think could make appropriate findings to do so.
What I'm looking at is to enable the space to be usable with all the stuff that we require and with the two possible spaces. I, I think we could, I mean, in my mind, one condition of this permit should be that there should be more space available for the stuff that we're requiring for as trash and, you know, just, I'll just say trash since we are requiring that. Because I'm thinking like six more feet would be ideal to facilitate trash cans not being in the way from just ingress egress on each side.
So maybe a way to clarify the potential condition we have in here right now. It says adequate trash receptacles at the vending area shall be made visible to public and shall be emptied at the close of each business day. Could change at to within? Is, is that satisfying your, the trash receptacles are within the vending area?
Yeah, and then, and in that case, six feet minus a trash can, is that, is that, is that accessible still? So that's where I feel like we could, we could make the area a little bigger, just because.
We can't.
You mean accessible via the ADA Act? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, if that's what it needs to be.
Well, we can certainly inform them on ADA standards in this case, but we are not the enforcement agency. It's a federal law and we don't enforce that. Now, we do have standards that align with that when a building is, a building permit is triggered. Or in the case of redoing a parking lot where a van-accessible spot may be required. But other than that, I would hesitate to sort of step on federal government's toes in terms of enforcing the ADA Act. But we can certainly provide them information there, too.
Would it be fair to say that that's a little outside of our jurisdiction as commissioners for PNC?
More eloquent.
That we should rely on the city to enforce or at least require what is adequate for the flow?
Absent a structure, if we're doing a parking lot, yes.
Changing gears just a little bit, I just know if that's okay, we address that. One of the concerns was talking about traffic flow. And if my recollection is correct, northbound traffic, there is a left turn lane onto Alder. Yes, no? But southbound traffic, there is, there's no right turn lanes anywhere along Fifth Avenue there, correct? So there is a left turn lane for northbound, but no right turn lane for southbound.
No, but it is, there are two lanes.
It is two lanes, yes, yes, so. Because that is a concern that had come up at a couple of different places, but it.
The five lanes, two including a turn lane is, is not approaching capacity. I think the average daily trips are hovering around 17,000 a year right now, last I checked. Currently, they have been rising, but again, that no traffic study is triggered that would, you know, maybe indicate something for a, a project with an, indicated with a much larger trip generation. So we really don't have data to make a finding about any traffic mitigation.
At this time, I would like to go around the commissioner table to just ask if they have any more input or questions. Kate?
No further input or questions. Thank you.
Forrest?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
John?
No.
Mo's?
Yeah, my, so is this our?
We're not in deliberation yet. We're, still essentially, we're in the applicant rebuttal.
Never mind.
Jason?
Questions?
Yeah, this finishes the applicant rebuttal stage, and we move to close the public hearing. Commission will deliberate now. No new information may be provided at this time, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations.
No. Can we make this where it's good for one, for only one space? Like for one food truck or one vendor?
Well, I would have, that.
We should have done that before.
So best practice would have been to ask the applicant about that during the, you know, that's, that changes, that's a significant condition.
From their testimony, that's where I come up with that. Because that we, it was discussed that, that there was only plans for one, and it would only be moved up to two if it was successful with one.
The application is specifically for two, and their trip generation letter for the traffic impacts was for up to two food trucks. And that's what we noticed.
Would anybody, any commissioner like to make a motion?
Sure, I can make the motion for approval. It's fine print, excuse me.
John, would you like this?
Oh, I'm good. I got it here.
I could bring it up there if that helps.
Oh, it's good. Consideration of the criteria and relevant standards in Idaho code and Sandpoint city code approved the request by John Edwards and Chris Parks for a conditional use permit for an outdoor vending at the northern portion of this parcel as described at 502 Cedar Street, including up to two food trucks in commercial A-zone, subject to the following conditions, which I would like to propose as being the potential development requirements listed by the city staff, A through D. Is that adequate?
Second to motion.
And we will take a vote. Forrest?
Aye.
Kate's already in.
Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
If I may read the roll call vote, please.
We have an expert clerk with us tonight. She, yeah, does this for a living.
So roll call vote for Shawk?
Well, let, if, if we could, Mr. Chair, we can just let city clerk make the roll call vote. That's typically how.
Gotcha.
Chairman Shawk? Commissioner Shawk?
In favor, aye.
Commissioner Hughesman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hastings?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Camp?
Aye.
He said aye. Did you catch that?
I said aye.
Yeah.
Back to you, Slate.
Oh, back to you.
Okay. Commissioners deliberated and approved motion to pass. CPU? CPU? At this time, I would move to adjourn. Is it that time?
I'd say so.
I'd say so.
A second.
Good job. Thank you all.
Thank you.